Good evening and welcome to-
(inaudible)
Welcome to the April regular meeting of the Board of Education. Joy, would you join the roll?
Mr. Whitcliff?
Here.
Mr. Sheer?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Spelter?
Mr. Geary?
Here. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get started with recognitions and awards. Maggie?
Good evening. It is that wonderful time of year when our boardroom is packed full of recognitions. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with a community partner. I'd like to ask Heather Schoonover from Community Development and Sidney Von Felt from the Alatha Public Schools Foundation to come forward to assist with this recognition. Tonight, it is our honor to recognize TVH, and from TVH representing is Brian Brazel. TVH is a global leader for material handling parts, and their team is recognized tonight for their longstanding support to district students and staff. TVH is always at the helm, leading and providing our 21st Century Academy students with in-depth and fulfilling professional learning experiences. CEO, Els Thermoda, and Human Resources Director Jennifer Maynard have personally been Alatha Public Schools youth mentors for many years, and TVH has provided strong support to the Alatha Public Schools Foundation through annual sponsorships at all major events, including the Autumn Breakfast and Summer Golf Tournament. And TVH leadership have been members of the Women's Giving Circle, and TVH has hosted a Women's Giving Circle event, and the company has also had representation on the Alatha Public Schools Foundation Board. So we thank you for your continued support of our district and our schools. Thank you. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Alatha North Software- Art- Software? It's been a long day. Sophomore Arjun Garapati to come forward, along with Principal Jason Herman. Arjun recently achieved a perfect ACT score. Nationally, while the actual number of students earning a composite score of 36 varies from year to year, less than one-tenth of 1% of students taking the ACT earn this top score. Congratulations. Congratulations. And Jason, don't go far. Next, we'd like to recognize the Alatha North Scholars Bowl. Would the team members come forward this time? The Scholars Bowl team recently won the Kansas 6A State Championship after defeating Blue Valley North High School in the championship finals. Scholars Bowl, and correct me if I've described this incorrectly, but the Scholars Bowl is a quiz-based competition that tests players in a wide variety of academic subjects. Yes. Congratulations to you all. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Alatha Northwest student Lailena Estebin to come forward, along with Principal Chris Zuck. For the second time in her educational career, Lailena is the Best of Show winner in the district's annual Martin Luther King Jr. Visual and Written Arts Contest. She also won in 2017. And I believe you were first place when you were in 8th grade in your category as well?
Yes.
Is that right? That's awesome. She is incredible. This year's contest received more than 4,600 entries from Alatha middle and high school students, and their writing, visual art, and multimedia presentation focus on the theme of ending silence, a new one for multimedia. Is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, that's okay, sorry. Congratulations to you.
Also, I'm a published author. If you're interested in buying a copy of my book, it's called "On the Grid." I have copies available tonight for $8. Otherwise, I have business cards if you'd like to buy it online.
Next, it is my honor to recognize two dance teams for national honors. We're going to start with Alatha Northwest. Would the Northwest Ravens Dance Team come forward, along with Coaches Shannon Summers and Allison Crumbigle and Principal Chris Zuck? The Northwest Ravens Dance Team won three national championships in the Large Varsity Team Competition at the National Dance Alliance Championship in Orlando, Florida. They've won championships in team performance, pom and jazz, and were also named Grand National Champions, and this is really cool. This is the sixth straight year in which the Ravens have won a national title. Congratulations. Do you want to do any parents need to get quick? Hold on, guys. Next, we'd like to recognize the Alatha North Eagle S Dance Team. If the team could come forward, along with Coach Kalesen Clare and Principal Jason Herman. The Eagle S earned the Large Varsity Pom National Champions Title at the Dance Team Union National Competition in Orlando, Florida, and this is really cool. This is the third consecutive national title for this dance team. Well done, ladies. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay. We're going to complete our evening tonight with a number of sports championships. So we're going to start with Alatha East Swimming. For this recognition, I'd like to ask the swimmers to come forward, along with Coach David Uker and Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Caleb Stappel. The Alatha East High School Boys 200-Yard Medley Relay Team, Philip Costello, Michael Leslie, Jack Gabrielson, and Aiden Walters, won the 6A State Championship in their event. And also, Philip Costello, if you could raise your hand. He also earned the Kansas 6A State Championship in the 100-yard breaststroke, while also setting a school record. Congratulations. Congratulations. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Alatha North Wrestler Keegan Slider to come forward, along with Coach Josh Carroll and Principal Jason Herman. Keegan earned the 6A State Wrestling Title in the 126-pound weight class and is now a two-time state champion. Congratulations. Congratulations. In our final recognition tonight, I'd like to ask Alatha West Bowler Mike Anderson to come forward, along with Coach Gary Caldwell, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Pat Butler, and Principal Jane Novich. Mike earned the Kansas 6A Bowling State Title. He also earned the Kansas 6A First Team All-State and was named Sunflower League Boys Bowler of the Year and Sunflower League First Team, and he's only a friend. Exciting future ahead. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move into public comments.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotaped recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium in the front of the room and state their name and address.
We've got Charity Rodriguez.
My name is Charity Rodriguez. I live at 1217 South One X Drive in Alatha, Kansas. I know we have a short time to discuss a lot of important issues in our schools, and this issue is significant to me and the students I teach. I know choosing non-renewal as opposed to resigning will likely impact my teaching career negatively, but I know I must speak my truth even as my voice shakes. I read a quote somewhere I find especially true in this situation. "The opposite of bravery is not cowardice, but conformity." There are certainly times, as these, when I have little to no power to sway the decisions already made, but this does not and cannot prevent me from explaining the injustice as I see it. If I had chosen to resign, then this creates an issue of integrity for myself and impacts ideals I have taught my students. I may have lost my job, but one cannot question my commitment to education, my commitment to my students, and as Susie Craftsman stated, "Stand up for what is right even if you stand alone." My own children understand the value of education because they watch me fight for my education, fight for my passion to learn and to teach, from my associates at Johnson County Community College, to my bachelors at MNU, my masters with emphasis in ESL at MNU, and my most recent completion of my masters in special education at KU. I substituted in the Alatha School District for several years. I long-term subbed in CPR classrooms, disciplinary literacy, leadership, industrial technology, all at finer trail, until I was hired as a 6th grade ELA teacher. In my first year, I had many observations by Robin Simmons, Elaine Parpner, Justin Howe, and Lee Myers. Every evaluation was effective or higher. The second year I taught, I observed by all the same people, except it was now Angel Sanford instead of Robin, because I was sort of a mid-year hire, but not really. Again, I was never rated less than effective. This is also when several doctoral professors from KU observed my teaching as I was getting my special education degree. And again, never negative. I have never received a complaint on any issue until this year. I teach my students that we are a community of learners. Every student is capable, every student contributes, and though this, we are all, and through this, we are all connected. This continues even as my students go into high school, and they know this. Last year, my second-year students throughout the building chose me as Teacher of the Year. Experiential learning discusses how students learn more when they are directly impacted by the situation. I do not call in sick. I am always available for my students, and this looks like seeing me at 7:00 AM every morning and being at school until 4:00 every evening, and being available during my personal plan for my students as well. My first encounter with our new administration was when I was sent an email discussing with families that on the day I was gone, students were disrespectful and did not complete the lesson. The reason I did this is because a note left by the substitute discussed students as classes, not individuals. I gave them an extra day to finish their work because they clearly had not learned the material, and explained I teach all my students respect and kindness are not optional. All the responses I received from parents were positive, supportive, grateful to me for maintaining communication. However, our administration saw this as a problem. It was stated that this is not acceptable, and in this building, we are working on a positive perception, and the email was viewed as negative. I did not understand this, but I assured the administration it would not happen again. In December, I was told I was not engaging my students and that I had lacked content knowledge. I was not engaging my students at this, or teaching belt spot. At this time, I was told if I did not meet this criteria, then I would face non-renewal. Explained I would go above and beyond to demonstrate the barriers. I reached out for help. I invited administration, I RT's my classroom to observe my teaching, to offer feedback. This did not happen until February 12th, when Mr. Link observed my teaching and offered feedback in my learning plan, marking me as an effective teacher. I had not heard anything yet, and I felt like I was tiptoeing through glass shards. So I reached out to ask about the determination as I had met the set expectations. I met these expectations without administrative feedback, observations, or virtually any other assistance, except a list of Keegan strategies. I felt very uncomfortable after speaking to administration via email only, and became even more fearful that no matter what I did, I could not meet the goals not described or discussed. So I reached out to families, asking for support at the upcoming Board meeting, should my worst fears be realized? And they were. Facing leaving a job I loved, feeling bullied, and facing unfair discrimination, I knew resigning could not be an option. I know my truth as far as Alatha's big three. I meet, exceed in these areas. My cohort now developed new plans, novel units, integrating new strategies, encouraging our students to take ownership in their own learning, and to be able to show their learning through reading, writing, speaking, and listening. Philosophy can be broken down into two big roots, love and wisdom. So it is love of wisdom that I teach.
Yeah, 30 seconds, sorry.
Progressivism demonstrates, constructing and interpreting worldviews. As far as engagement, there is no better way to engage students than to build relationships with them and to reflect with my students. This means sometimes I go back to Maslow's hierarchy, and why? Because basic needs have to be met before we can even begin to teach. My classroom is a safe place, a soft place to land. After attending a trauma-based learning seminar, I realized even more clearly students need a safe place to be. I'm just asking you to consider with the teacher shortage, teacher retirement, that having a teacher who really wants to be there here can be handled differently. I love PT, and I love every one of my students.
We've also got on the list Jonathan Conch.
Hi, good evening. John Potit, 16208 West 132nd Street, Alatha, Kansas. Had kids in the Alatha School District a long time, and it's a great school district, great place, but I will tell you this. On behalf of Ms. Rodriguez, I've never seen a more caring, passionate educator for kids out of all the teachers that my kids have gone through. Got a sophomore in high school, great teachers, some better than others. She stands out. As a parent, when I think about educators, it's not a check-the-box scenario in today's society. It takes a devout dedication and commitment with what these students face day in, day out. I've been involved in schools and giving back for a long time, and for what it's worth, she's a great educator. In two weeks, three weeks, I have an AB student who's gone to an F in that same class, along with about 15 other kids. Why? There's a disconnect somewhere, and maybe there's things that happen that shouldn't happen, but I do believe in this. People make mistakes, and if they do, then I think there's a process to correct those. I think the city of Alatha and our schools lose today if we lose her, and I can think of plenty of teachers that are great educators, but not plenty that stand out. So for what that's worth, I appreciate everything you've done.
Others wishing to address the Board? All right. Thank you. Seeing none? Oh, we have one?
My name is Jonathan Conan, and my address is 15702 West 125th Street, Alatha, Kansas. Ms. Rodriguez is the best teacher I ever had. You see, she won the Teacher of the Year, and so, you see, Patrick Mahomes won the MVP. Are the Chiefs gonna cut him? No. So why should we fire Ms. Rodriguez? It doesn't make sense to me. We all get excited about Patrick Mahomes. We're all super excited about Ms. Rodriguez, so we should keep her because she's the best teacher I ever had, and she cares, and she's the only person in the school I can talk to about anything. That's all that goes.
Others?
My name is Carrie Nastef. I live at 14921 West 123rd Terrace. I have two children in the Alatha School District, both of whom have attended PT, and I am familiar with a bunch of the different teachers from different grades. My daughter had a lot of great teachers, and my son is the one who struggles. My daughter was good at everything, didn't have any trouble, but my son was the one who struggled. And when he first got to middle school, he had issues. He had a hard time adjusting. All of his teachers came together and met with me, taking time out of their day and out of their schedules, to talk about my son, and Mrs. Rodriguez was firm with him, did not compromise on her standards with him, and yet helped him get to a level where he could achieve. And to me, that's as big a lesson as any actual curriculum lesson that could be provided. Because if you can't, if you can't get organized, if you can't focus, if you can't do all the things that make a successful student, then you're not going to learn anything anyway. And so he went from having Ds and Fs at the beginning of the year to all his teachers, you know, helping him out and getting him motivated, and now he's got As and Bs. And he talks to me about lessons that he's learned in her classroom. And I don't know if any of you still have 11-year-olds, but they don't really talk about school. That's, you know, "Oh, Mom, I'm done with school. Don't, you don't make me talk about this." But he talks to me about the things that he's learned, and he has ODD, which means any adult who gets in his face, or like me, or a teacher who disciplines, can be a potential trigger for him. And yet, the way that she has helped him develop, she doesn't do that. And so he appreciates both the discipline and the learning, and that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any others?
My name is Riley Carney. I live at 13304 West 112 Terrace in Overlum Park, and I know a lot of adults think that kids won't understand things like this. I disagree with that because everyone's different, but it takes something from a teacher to prove that they're worthy to a student, in my opinion. They teach you, they give you life lessons that will stick to you forever. They're a very important part in your life, and it takes one thing for a teacher to teach, but it makes something else for a teacher to be excited for the student to learn, they want to learn from that teacher. I found that this year. I didn't really have that from years kindergarten to 5th grade. When I came to school, I was excited for first hour, my hour with Ms. Rodriguez, and after that hour, if I had a good day in that hour, which I did most of the time, I had a pretty good day, and that never really happened for me in school. There were good days, and then there were days where Ms. Rodriguez actually taught me a lesson, a lesson that I will make sure to keep with me, and it's that sometimes learning life lessons about life in quotes, things that you'll live with forever, is different than learning reading or poems, and she made sure that we got to communicate with each other. She communicated with all of us, made sure we understood it. And there are teachers that go over it and then they just leave it. But Ms. Rodriguez made sure she, we stuck with it. She gave us papers to help us. She made sure we were ready for the test. She almost always let us create, correct papers. And she let us be creative with ourselves. And I think that's something that every teacher should have. She worked so hard for us to have a great curriculum in her class. And I learned so much in that class. And I've never learned that much about reading. And reading is something I love. And I love it even more now even because of her class. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live, uh, 1509 East Frontier Lane, Alatha. And I am currently in tenth grade. And I had Ms. Rodriguez as a teacher when I was in sixth grade, which feels like forever ago. And she's stuck with me enough that I am here today. And so is my friend Rabia that also had her in sixth grade. And it's just, this obviously shows that she makes an impact on her students. A lot of teachers just teach to teach and then that's done. And I've had my fair share of teachers, as much kids do. But, I mean, like, I remembered her enough and she made a big enough effect on me in my life. And she helped me through so much through middle school, which is a tough time for kids that are like going through a lot with life. And I just feel like it's really important that they have more of a connection with their teachers and they feel comfortable enough to talk to them about anything and not just school. Don't get me wrong, she was an amazing teacher, but that's not even the point in case here because she's more than just a teacher. Like, she was just the best ever. And that's why I really don't think she should be fired because I hope she can help other kids like she helped me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm, um, I'm Rabia and I live on 14417 Valentine Street. Um, and I go to Blue Valley Northwest, but I went to Pioneer Trail, um, in middle school. And so I never had Ms. Rodriguez as a teacher, but like, she was one of the teachers that, like, I felt comfortable going to because most of my teachers, they were all just like school, like, oh, this is what you have to do. But she was one of the teachers that I had, like, that I could just go and talk to and like, she like made me feel better and like, I actually had a connection with her. And that's not like really something that you find in a teacher and mostly, like, mostly in middle school. So for her to like be there for most of my friends and me, like, she really helped us out and like, yeah, sorry.
Others wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we will move along to information presentations, future library program.
Hello, I'm thrilled to be here. My name is Lori Franklin and I manage the Alatha School Libraries and the people that work in them, the school librarians, as well as the library clerks. And I'm thrilled to be here to tell you all about our library programs because I don't know if you remember what your libraries were like when you were in school, but they've changed a lot, so we're gonna tell you a little bit about that. I want to let you know that we have a foundational guiding organization called the American Association of School Librarians. And we look to them to give us information, help us with our standards, give us some great ideas about how to impact programming. We also look at evidence-based practice based on research. We don't just come up with ideas about what we do in our libraries out of our heads, but we do some of that. But we also look at what is out there in the research and how it impacts how we teach students. Of course, we're all invested in the Big Three. We hear about it all the time and that's definitely plays a big part in our libraries. You know, we're really invested in getting kids to, for students to understand how to use information skills throughout their entire lives. You know, you think of something simple like going and buying a car, it's really not that simple, is it? Buying a car is a huge decision. You have to do a lot of research, a lot of comparisons. Those are all information skills. And we're teaching kids about those skills every time we do projects with them and teach We just got our new library media curriculum and standards approved, uh, last month, so we're pretty thrilled about that. We have exciting library events that we're programming and luckily I have some folks up here that are gonna be a lot more interesting than me with my text-heavy PowerPoint slides. And, um, you know, the library really is a small business. We call it the convenience store sometimes. Every moment, somebody's coming in and they all want something different. Somebody's gonna need this and somebody needs that off a shelf, but then you ran out of this, so you have to order that. Truly, they're teaching and they're also managing a small business at the same time. So we are trying to work into a continuous growth model where we're constantly improving, looking at research, networking with peers, and, uh, trying to come up with the best possible ways to meet student and staff needs. And now I'm gonna let Christine Walker from Arbor Creek talk to you about the elementary library program.
Okay, so we felt, the elementary librarians and myself, the best way for you to experience an elementary library for, is for you to see our students in action. So we have a video that is a cross-section highlighting all the different activities and programs in our elementary schools.
So that gives you an idea of a lot of the different activities we have going on in our elementary libraries. I mean, it's not obviously just about reading books anymore, although we love reading books, don't get me wrong, we love that. Now to talk to you about middle, I'd like to invite Marla Jones to talk to you about some, a special project that they've been doing and she will cover that?
Yes, sure. And my part is all about reading.
Yeah, let's grab this.
I'm gonna speak to our Trail Challenge this year, which was all about that voice and choice piece. So Alatha middle school readers have been on quite a journey this school year. We implemented a district-wide middle school reading program for the first time in a very long time, giving students a voice to speak out for books that they wanted on that challenge list this year. And then a choice by voting and then getting to select their favorites that we're actually gonna go on a March Madness bracket that we just finished today. Reading is one of those foundation beliefs for all library media programs. And what better way to embrace that than to have a program that offers quality literature that students can share in reading and appreciating through discussions and reviews and ratings, and then again, voting to select that favorite book. So we started out on this, uh, with a list of twenty-eight books selected by a committee of library media specialists that worked all last summer putting this list together. Um, is there anybody here tonight that was on that? There's a few people that were here on that, that. So the books met a particular criteria. They had to include positive reviews, uh, they had to have current copyright dates, they had to have a variety of genres. Um, we wanted to, books that were gonna acknowledge diversity, everything from biographies to graphic novels were on the list, books written in prose, historical fiction, sports, and a few off our William Mellon White List, which is our state book award list. Students started the year reading from that large list of twenty-eight, but then an enthusiastic group of middle school readers came together at the IRC in the fall and they were to pare down that list to sixteen. So those were our kiddos that did a lot of the reading and helped decide on that list. And it was fun to watch them as they discussed and debated, they argued, and then they got to select that list. Um, it was really interesting listening to their conversations as they decided what was gonna make the cut and their reasons for keeping a book versus eliminating a book. And then, uh, Dr. McMullin treated them all to a pizza lunch on that day, so it was a good day and a lot of kids are still talking about that. All the middle school libraries across the district, the ten Trail Schools, so we called it the Trail Challenge, prominently displayed those books and they displayed them and promoted them in various ways throughout the whole school year. Students kept track of them on these punch card bookmarks that we had. And of course, many of the students proudly finishing their lists, got their pictures taken, that was a big deal for them. Some schools offered scratcher tickets for the kids that would read the books and do reviews on our library media, um, catalog system. Um, students used QR codes for scanning book trailers and then later the QR codes were used as Google Forms for the voting process. Students could post reviews and ratings of the books in Destiny. Um, we started our voting at the beginning of March, so we started our March Madness with the Sweet Sixteen. And then after spring break, we continued with the Grade Eight. Fantastic Four was last week and then just this week, in fact, this afternoon, we had our final tallies, um, to come down to our last and final book. Voting was done in a variety of ways, from Google Forms to tickets to stickers, shooting baskets for their favorite books. And even today, I found out about one group that was putt, they had a putting range that they got to putt to choose their, their final book. Um, and now, after thousands of checkouts, much deliberation among students and more than ten thousand votes being tabulated over these past few weeks, we are happy to announce our first Trail Challenge winning book and it's Project 1065 by Alan Gress. It is a historical fiction novel. And this is a genre that's kind of been brought to the forefront because it's one of those that one librarian who's actually here said that, uh, historical fiction is that, uh, section in the library that go, where books go to die, but, um, he has brought that to the forefront now. Um, so Project 1065, like I said, it is a historical fiction novel. It is set in nineteen forty-three in Nazi Germany. Um, and we have a young Irish lad, thirteen years old, named Michael O'Shaughnessy, who poses as a member of the Hitler Youth, but he's actually a spy. Um, and kids are really getting into that. So, um, it's so rewarding to see the kids get so excited about books and rally for their favorite titles. And so this is one of the things that's bringing kids into our libraries.
All right. Good to hear about middle. And then lastly, we'd like to tell you about high school. And I'd like to introduce Melanie Matthews, who is our librarian at Alatha West. And do you wanna click through or you want me to? Okay, you're good.
All right, good evening. I'm excited to share just some of what we have, some awesomeness at the high school. I think teenagers get a bad rap sometimes, so I'm excited to show you some of these awesome pictures and things that they're doing at all of our high schools. Um, the biggest goal I always have is for students to feel welcome, um, because a library's more than just a place to go grab a book. And so, anything from comfy furniture and most importantly to the attitude of those of us who are in that library, we're always wanting them to see themselves there, um, to know that they're welcome there before school, after school. And then, once we've gotten to that point, know that this is a resource for them, a place to find information, a place to get help. Um, I'm a former English teacher, so usually, sometimes an hour before a research paper's due, I'll have a student stop by and say, please, take a look, or can you help me? I still need another source. I'm like, sure, we've got twenty minutes. Um, and so with working with our teens, flexibility is a big thing that all of us at the high schools have, um, because we want to be a strong, positive resource for all of them. A couple of things I wanna highlight, uh, once we, once they recognize that we are a resource, we're there to support them, is to get them engaged because we have students that are juggling jobs and sports and clubs and taking care of their families, um, but they usually always have a phone. And so one of the first things that I enjoy doing with students, we look at books for information, we look at databases, but what they really like to use are our virtual reality goggles. And we have found some amazing apps. In our social studies classes, we download a World War One app that is called Trench Warfare, uh, trench experience, where students actually plug in, um, it's as if you're walking in a trench, um, in a safe way. Um, but it's about, it's, we can time travel a hundred years in the past. And from there, I've had students say, okay, I researched this trench, now can I look at a battle from World War Two, or when they're studying Vietnam? Or students who are in another class and they need to see what Dublin looks like. Um, so we have found different ways to engage the students that's their world. Um, when I do a show of hands with a group of thirty high schoolers, when I ask who all has done anything with gaming, um, whether that be console, PC gaming, or with virtual reality, over half raise their hands. And so what we try to do is reach out to them in their language and to show that resource, resources exist in more than our traditional ways. So for a lot of types of learners, they prefer this. Couple of pictures I'd like to share tonight. Uh, we all engage in several of the things listed there with readers, advisory, book clubs, STEM, STEM you're familiar with, STEAM, of course, we wanna add in that art, but we're librarians, so we throw that R in there because reading and research is part of everything that we do. Um, innovation and embedded because we work with our teachers, we co-teach with them, we support the curriculum to find different ways to enhance it to help our students learn information better. Okay. Um, I love it when they get excited. This was not staged. That student on the right, uh, we had a huge request for, um, books that are made into movies. And so this happened to be the, the student on the right, when we, when we told him we did have a copy of The Hate U Give, he did that. Um, so I asked him if I could take a picture because I, I have never had a student jump like that when I sent out a book. Um, same with students, um, there in the middle, Justin is in our library every morning. Usually, by the end of the month, provides me with lists of books that I'm missing and that he needs us to order for the library. Putt putt, we do a lot of hands-on. Uh, sometimes it's putt putt and it's, we're doing a scavenger hunt. Sometimes students just need something to stay busy when you still have ten minutes before school starts. Uh, collaboration stations, we are very embedded with our technology. Um, and this allows our students to collaborate and meet in a group for planning group presentations. Library mini golf, you're just kinda seeing a theme here. Uh, virtual reality, uh, these are two young men that have come back more, on more than one occasion because they really like using the apps for research. Uh, at Alatha East, they do this great program where it's cooking, collaborating with the library, and actually preparing for the real world where students research, um, look at their own allergies and things to plan food because, um, food for teenagers is a big deal and some of them are concerned about how they're gonna continue to eat when they leave high school. Um, one of my favorite things, Alatha West, we have our fifty-minute lunch and so when students, um, are entering contest time, um, we have a group of very talented musicians. So we always are having students that are coming in and performing in the library, gives them additional practice before their contests and it tends to mellow everyone out a little bit too. Uh, community, we are a community. All of our high schools want our students to see themselves in their books, in our displays. Um, and so all of our displays involve students and their families. The one on the left, um, we do in November for our veterans, uh, the one in January, um, was our students sharing what their dreams are. Goal is always to have some fun and we, I happen to work with two great educators named Patrick, so they were jumping in for our Irish, Irish-I-We're-Reading. Irish, Irish-I-We're-Reading display. Olahtha North has really started this program. All the high schools do this, where we want our students to see themselves in the cover, to feel included. All of our book collections are considered to be a diverse collection. This is one of my favorite group of kids. We come in, we do a big haunted library every year. All students are invited to trick-or-treat. I've worked in elementary, middle, and high school, and the common thing I've noticed is they all like candy, and they are kind of bummed when you get to high school and we don't have the big party. So, we still do in the library. This goes back to the inclusion in the library. We're always trying to make sure that students see themselves on the cover of a book, and we have a lot of fun with it. And this last one, I don't remember which school this came from, at Olahtha South, but when you get this kind of feedback, you feel pretty good about what you're doing. So, thank you.
And lastly, I just want to comment that this is School Library Month, the month of April, and I would love to recognize our librarians and library clerks who came here to see this presentation and provide their support. Would you stand up? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on to action items, the consent agenda. I would ask, does anyone have anything that they would like to pull off of the consent agenda for discussion?
Well, just because of the importance of budget and goals and all of that, John, can you just take a few minutes to kind of walk us through 5.07? John or John?
As we prepare for the budget season this summer, establishing our 1920 budget, we've readdressed the goals. Many of them are the same as in previous years, because we still have challenges in trying to build some of our reserves up. But there, one that I want to point out that is at the top of that list right now, is we really need to start strategizing about the decrease we're going to start to feel in the next couple of years in the area of BOTA or ancillary facility waiting. That is the revenue stream we receive from a local levy as we open buildings. As we slow in our growth, open less buildings, those buildings come off our schedule, and we'll begin to lose about $3 million a year. Right now, we have $20 million of that revenue source. If we were to build another elementary school in a couple of years, it sort of dampens that. But basically, we need to strategize a five-to-10-year plan on how will we reduce our dependency on that revenue, revenue stream unless we expect to suddenly have another boost in our enrollment to 45,000 students or something. It's, right now, we have plenty of capacity in our buildings other than at elementary on the west side.
So, talk a little bit about number six, too. Where are we?
Number six, we're getting pretty close, honestly, on capital outlay. We've been able to slowly build that up a little bit with some of, some land sales and various things. I'm not going to say we're necessarily going to get there now. As far as a 60-days cash reserve, that's, that's a very big stretch goal. As I've reported, sometimes we're negative cash days, and sometimes we, we can get up as high as 40, depending on the timing, but we hover probably 15, 15 on the average. You'd need about $40 million in just the operating reserves to reach that kind of goal. But it is, I won't say it's an educational industry standard, but it's good business practice standard to have 60-days cash. So, that would be a very long stretch goal. The 10% contingency, we hover about 5% right now, but we, and we really haven't grown that reserve. We've, we've been, been able to do it with capital outlay, but not with either our operating or contingency reserve. But we'll continue to keep trying to do that as we come out of these tough funding years.
Well, I appreciate you just kind of going through this, because again, it is, it is difficult, and it's great that we have goals out there, and it's great that we have stretch goals.
Correct.
But specifically, when I was looking through this and identified number one and identified number six, and say, okay, these kind of go in opposite directions.
They do.
It's great for us to at least bring this up and make sure people are recognizing this and talking about this and thinking about this, and knowing that this board, along with the administrations, are working towards this. We have goals, we have objectives, and we're going to work towards these. But there's going to be a lot of challenges to get to.
Correct.
Other questions for Mr. Hutchison? Thank you. Other items, board members, with which to pull off the consent agenda? If not, I entertain a motion.
I would move to approve consent action items 5.01 through 5.08 as presented.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. McKeon, a second by Mr. Geely.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to action other, I'm sorry, action bids, contracts, and agreements. Renewal of our time clock software and hardware, security upgrades, and a couple of temporary easements. Does anyone want further information on any of those four items?
Just curious, 6.04, where you're talking about this, and was looking at some of the exhibits, and they're referencing Northeast Elementary School. I mean, is that a typo, or did we, was Wollongrove called Northeast at one time?
Without knowing the specifics, I think so, and I think that's what the actual portion or property used to be named.
Okay.
So, but right now, the city's coming through and doing improvements along there, increasing turn lanes, along with 6.03 at Indian Trail in front, with the expansion of Garmin, the infrastructure needs to get increased for turn lanes in, in all directions and around that area. If you've ever been there at 8 o'clock in the morning, you know how, how hectic it can be. So, but yes, some city improvements.
Thank you. Other questions?
I thought we had a new elementary school.
No, six, but. I entertain a motion.
I would move to approve action items, bids, contracts, and agreements, 6.01 through 6.04 as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. McKeon, a second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right. Now, moving to action other. Looks like we have a couple of trips, and then the student fees, miscellaneous charges, and facility rental fees for 2019, 2020. Any board members like any additional information on these three items?
Can you just walk through the fee schedule a little bit, please?
Thank you, Mr. Shear, because I want to clarify something. In case you did not receive an email, we corrected an error late this afternoon in the schedule, but the verbiage on your agenda item is incorrect. Although we were trying to keep all the meal prices to an increase of five cents versus what the, the federal calculation says it should be 10 cents, we could do that with student prices. We cannot do that with adults. So, it must go up 10 cents. Your schedule is correct, but the, the background information on, on the agenda item still says five cents. As I, as we've had in other years, we're able to have a waiver for operating reasons. We'd need to do the five cents. Federal calculation would say you can go up 10, we have, and you must preserve your funding. However, federal government has now issued a lot of waivers again, as they have the last three years. So, we just need to capture enough to handle the increase in our operating costs. In the facility usage realm, we restudied, are we covering our costs in one area? We're not, and that is in our ground supervision when we rent out our, our DAX, ODAC, and C-Back. So, we have to increase that by $5 an hour in order to cover the overtime rates for staff when they work those events. And driver's education as well needs to increase to help cover some of the costs. Otherwise, all of our fees have remained constant. We are getting some pressure, probably getting whole, feeling the heat from Dr. Jaeger. We may have to start raising that instructional material fee. That's where we fund our textbooks. And as he assesses, kind of lays out his plan, as we move forward, we may have to start moving that fee up. Right now, it's in the realm of our neighboring districts.
When was the last time we raised?
We haven't moved that, the instructional.
Yeah, instructional.
It's been about three years since we moved the instructional material fee. We can move it a lot and still have challenges every year, so we, we always have to try to find other sources within the general fund to help us at times. And learning services have been pretty diligent about and creative about trying to use other resources.
And is it current state, just so that I'm clear, that we continue to, while we have a replacement cycle for textbooks, we end up shifting that further and further out just because of?
Correct. And the, and the fallacy, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Jaeger, the devices don't necessarily replace the textbook, because the textbook companies just turn it into electronic textbook at the same cost to get the access to the textbook. So, yes, we're, there is no paper in many times, but the fee is the same to get access to the material.
Yeah. Thank you.
We did not increase fees on facility rentals in a, in a couple areas that we're going to continue to do some study, but I feel pretty confident we'll be bringing back some recommendations when we look at our auditoriums and our pools in particular. When you think of a pool at $25 an hour and a small high school auditorium at $25 an hour, that's particularly during certain times of the year, that just does not cover the, the cost for us to, to be able to make those available. I want to balance the, the community's support for our buildings. We can't do that at the cost of instructional programs and, and other things like that. So, there are some of those that we're continuing to take a look at, and I just wanted to let you know, when we bring this back next year, we'll, we'll probably have adjusted those for what really are adjustments in our actual costs.
Other questions on this topic?
No questions, just a comment, though. But I applaud everybody for working towards this and trying to keep this. There's a lot of families that this stretches in already. And so, it's great that we're able to continue to find, John, to your point, finding different resources to be able to help specifically these families. We want to be able to educate them. We want to be able to give these services, and even this. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve action other items 7.01 through 7.03.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Geely, a second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
All right. You can see on your list, future action items. I'll note that one of them is the KASB nominating committee, committee appointments, so be thinking if that's something that you, you might have interested in, interest in coming up. Additionally, you had your written report, the 2019 April Head Start Director's Report. With that, I'd open it up for topics for discussion of the board.
I was just going to take a quick moment to thank the House passed the education bill today. I think the Senate was looking at it tonight.
They have passed it.
They've passed it, okay. So, just wanted to publicly thank the House and the Senate for passing that. And then just mention that a few of us were able to go to the NASB conference this weekend, and I appreciate that opportunity to do that. Took a couple sessions on board governance that were educational and kind of forced me to look a little bit at board policies and gave me some ideas on that. Other sessions on evidence-based school results and also NASB legal advocacy, which I didn't necessarily know if I enjoyed that class or not, but it turned out to be very interesting, all the things that they advocate for at the federal level. So, I appreciate that opportunity.
Yeah, I'll just touch on, I was also able to attend that conference and grateful for that experience. You know, some, some different things that I don't know that we've thought about much, like artificial intelligence. There are quite a few sessions on that. Some also interesting ways where the board could engage students and have student advisors. And I know that we've got a superintendent's advisory council. I'm wondering if there might be some potential in the future for some board involvement there. And then also, it left me feeling good about the, about the direction that we're going. You know, one of the keynotes talked about the disconnect that's happening between education and the workforce. And so, I think that with our work in the Portrait of a Graduate, and I commend Kansas Department of Education for being really ahead of that and sort of, sort of leading the way on recognizing that there is a disconnect and starting to do something about it. Education systems are big. We are a big district, so it takes a long time to sort of turn that, that ship, but I'm enthused by the directions that we've taken to, to start to move that direction. So.
Yeah, and I'd add, I, with some areas that I went to with LGBTQ equity, some things that are pretty fresh here that we've, that we've had come into the board lately, along with some issues with that we need to be considering related to athletics activities that are big legal items that have, that have come up recently on, on different cases. So, those are a couple that, some things that came out that I'd like to bring him back to, to share with administration, some of that, along with just getting a chance to visit with people from all over the country about things that are going on. And I echo what Shannon said, that I just feel so blessed by where we're at on, on things in a lot of different ways, because we are truly ahead of, ahead of the game, I think, in a lot of areas, and we just need to keep that up. So, kudos to everybody for that, and especially allowing us for, to go and spend the weekend.
And all that, the same, you guys were talking about just the sessions that they had on leadership advocacy, teaching, learning were pretty amazing. I'm not a tech guy, so I really enjoyed the sessions we were put on by Apple. It was good to see what, what they're doing in the classroom for these students and how they're preparing them to just think the unimaginable. And I thought that was extremely valuable, and I know that that's what we're doing for our kiddos here at Olahtha School. It was good to visit with other districts around the state, not only Kansas, but Missouri, but the United States. There's over 5,000, 6,000 attendees there, Superintendent's Board of Education, and they all have thoughts and opinions, but Go Public Education, it was, it was a great conference and we're glad that we were able to attend.
And we got to hear a stellar student mariachi band from South Texas. They were amazing.
If only we would have been able to have some cheesesteak while we were there.
Don't say that word anymore, please. Other thoughts from board members? Anything you'd like to share? Okay. With that, Mr. Allison, superintendent comments?
Just a couple this evening. In keeping on with the theme of NSBA, I want to thank Olahtha Health and several of our local partners that provide the funding for the board to be able to, to attend and continue to, to develop professionally as a board. I think it's, it's very important, and they know through years of tough budgets that that was difficult for the, the board to, to be able to, to spend resources in that way and have provided that opportunity. So, I want to say a special thank you to them. In regards to what, what is occurring legislatively, the House and the Senate, through Conference Committee, both approved the Conference Committee report today, which means that the, the governor and KASB, or the state board's recommendation on funding schools for the next four years will now move forward to the governor's signature, which it was also her budget. So, I'm, I'm sure that will be signed fairly quickly. On Monday, the Attorney General must present his written arguments on what has passed today for the Supreme Court justices to review, to see if it'll meet constitutionality on school finance, with oral arguments then on May 9. So, still not sure exactly how the courts will receive this, but I believe that the plan compared to some of the others that were discussed will be much more favorably reviewed. It does provide approximately $140 more per student per year for 2020 through 2023, and then, beginning in 2024, would have an increase equal to the, the CPI index. So, it, it doesn't get us when you look at where we were in 2009, and add inflation between 2009 over the last decade, we're still not back to that point, but we're much closer than we have been, which will get, give us an opportunity. give us an opportunity to continue to move forward with our instructional programs. So be interesting to see how the court interprets this. But once again, as John is preparing and developing a budget for you all, we're still having to plan and hope that it works out the way it's being proposed, but as you all had to be adept at looking at budgetary priorities depending on what finally happens in Topeka, but much better step forward than we've had in some past years. So I, too, want to say thank you for the representatives and senators that supported that action to get us to move on and at least get it in front of the court for their interpretation. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. Thank you. As my understanding, we do need executive session. We'll start with 15 minutes, which we, we'll call it 7:30. Move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual employment performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 7:30 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. McCune.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of the following resolution. Resolution pursuant to KSA 72-2251, whereas Charity Rodriguez is currently employed in Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, and whereas the Board of Education of Said Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, finds that the contract of Charity Rodriguez should be non-renewed, and that Charity Rodriguez should be given written notice on or before May 17, 2019, of the intent of the Board of Education to non-renew her contract for the 2019-2020 school year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, as follows. It is hereby declared to be the intent of the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, that the employment contract of Charity Rodriguez as a teacher be non-renewed for the 2019-2020 school year, and the clerk of the Board of Education is directed to give written notice in person or by restricted United States mail to Charity Rodriguez on or before May 17, 2019, of the Board's intent to non-renew this contract for the 2019-2020 school year, adopted by the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, the fourth day of April, 2019.
Second.
Kind of a motion by Ms. Martin, a second by Mr. McCune.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
With that, we are adjourned.